Does anybody know if Robin was gonna be making it?
Well, still I hadn't heard anything.
Jenny, are you there?
There we are, Randy.
Yeah, how's Scott? Hey, Luis, I show your microphone is muted. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
There you go. Okay, I hear you now.
Yeah, I just texted Robin to see if he's gonna join us this morning. I don't know if he... Where he's at. I'll let you guys know here in a second if I get a response. I can hear you, Randy.
Good, good.
It is muted, so there won't be too much background noise. Hey, Robin, are you on? Can you hear me? Hey, Robin, can you hear us?
I think I can hear you.
Awesome.
You do wanna hit your video button?
No.
There you go.
Good morning. Hey, Christie, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
You wanna mute your microphone?
Mute mine?
Yeah, until your, you know, your stuff comes up, cuz I can hear you tapping.
Oh, I thought I was muted.
In the bottom left-hand corner is a mute button, and only commissioners and myself should be on the whole time. Russell, can you hear me? Just look at me. Do I read all of the directions on the front of this notice?
Can you hear me, Jim? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, no, you do not. You just, uh, just do it like we normally do it.
Okay, alright. Just making sure.
Yes, sir.
So if we're, is everybody ready?
Ready.
Ready. Ready.
Okay, it's April 3rd, 9:06 in this. Okay, let me start over.
Cut.
Okay, April 13th at 9:06, this meeting is now open. Item number two we will start with is discuss take action on library annual report. Debbie. Okay, Debbie, we can't hear you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
The item I have on the agenda for today is to, um, for the annual report. The deadline for that is April 30th, so we would like to go ahead and get that report submitted today or tomorrow as soon as we can, so that the state has an opportunity to review it before the deadline. That way, if we need to make changes, then we can make those changes before the deadline. After April 30th, um, the state cannot go back into the portal and change anything. Nor can we.
Okay. I... Go ahead. I meant to bring up commissioners, uh, Allison has asked if there's a motion to be made, please be concise, uh, because she's not looking at faces, she's just listening right now. Also, you get ready, if you wanna make a motion, please identify who you are, just so she doesn't make a mistake, uh, just listening to voices. And then two, for my benefit, normally when we're in the courtroom, I think I hear everybody on my left and the right. If it's okay, could I ask you, when you do vote, you say aye as normal, but would you mind just raising your hand or something? Just cuz I can't see everybody all at once, and I just wanna make sure I get it right.
Judge, can I make a suggestion? What about here on, on the message box? Can we just type in like our name and then say aye? That way you can also see it on your message. I mean, just trying to make it easy.
Yeah, just, this whatever is easy, so I don't mess it up, so, uh, cuz I'm looking at about ten different screens right now, and there's a delay and... Anyway, so, I'm sorry, Debbie, uh, if you were finished or you wanna go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to say that I sent an overview of what we've, what we're reporting, but I would like to come back at a later date and give the full report to the court. But because we have a deadline, that's the reason I would like to go ahead and, and have the accreditation letter signed.
Now, uh, this is Scott. I'm gonna, uh, make the motion authorizing the county judge to sign the state library system accreditation form.
This is Randy, I will second.
Yeah, item number two would be discuss, and then item number three, take action, so, uh, let me read item number three, uh, right quick. Discuss take action authorizing the county judge to sign state library system accreditation form. Okay.
Well, I guess we gotta go back to two, but I'm not real sure what it is, just, just, uh, take action on the annual library report. It almost seems redundant that this is...
Well, that's true. Discuss take action on annual report, and then discuss take action on signing the accreditation form for that report.
I guess we could, I guess, uh, we could do two of these, uh, let's see, uh, uh, make the motion acknowledging the library's annual report. That's an item two.
Okay. Is there a second?
This is Randy, I will second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Okay, now, item number three, discuss take action authorizing county judge to sign state library system accreditation form.
Again, I'll make the motion authorizing county judge to sign state library system accreditation form.
This is Randy, I will second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, thank you. Uh-huh. Item number four, discuss take action on public assistance grant program. Is Justin with us?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, okay.
Yes, this is the, uh, the grant for the seventy-five twenty-five match for reimbursing the federal funds on some of the expenses that were occurring during the COVID-19 response. I just got to, um, please, I need your signature on, Judge, for this.
This is Randy, I will make the motion that we would authorize county judge to sign this, uh, document.
This is Scott, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Item number five, discuss take action on application for 2020 Good Neighbor Grant.
This is a grant that we were actually contacted for by Nadine Craddock. Um, I guess she found the grant and was reaching out to all the first responders, but it's for the fire departments, uh, basically all first responders, but it's up to a $10,000 grant, and we're looking at putting in for $8,307.16 towards training education for incident command training classes.
What, what's the reason for not going for the full ten?
That was just, um, when we put together everything we needed, that, that's what it came out to.
And no, uh, possibilities needing, needing more money, uh, in, in this area in the future? Or at least during this time?
Not. Not from this grant. Like I said, we, we put in a lot of extra stuff in there, and it's, it's up to 10,000, so I'm not sure. It could end up being 500, or I'm not sure what they're gonna, if they'll even give us any. But like I said, once we found everything we wanted, and that's just what it came out to. Like I said, we've added some extra stuff just to try and get closer to ten, but...
Okay. I'll make a motion, uh, this is Luis. I'll make a motion that we, um, sign this application for the 2020 Good Neighborhood, uh, Good Neighbor Grant.
This is Robin, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Item number six, discuss take action on additional funds for supplies for emergency management.
Currently in our budget for emergency management, our emergency supplies, um, we only have $800 that we're budgeted for each year. So we're having to pull from other line items to cover some of these COVID-19 expenses. So I'm asking right now for an additional, at least $20,000, just to kinda keep us going. Um, I don't predict this thing to be going on much longer, depending on what the governor says this week. So hopefully we'll start winding down, but we've had to make some purchases that, um, have, had to come out, be covered out of other line items in my budget, and we're running out of...
Can you tell us what those line items are and what you anticipate as far as expenditures?
Yeah, some of them were the ones I emailed to you guys, um, offline, about the reefer truck, uh, the fuel. Those were our two biggest expenses. Um, we've recently purchased, uh, some, um, a tote of disinfectant that should be here this week that we'll be passing out. A, a lot of it's gonna be some, some minor stuff. We may have to end up ordering some, some more masks, just to cover Culver and the detention center, along with spray bottles, um, just some other requests that are coming down. I can't think of off the top of my head. Um, some of that will go to, to recover some of that fuel and stuff that we spent for that reefer truck anticipating having to use it.
Justin, this is Randy, Prue. Do you, uh, do you find that product called Impale or something similar to that, that we can spray things with?
Yes, and that was one of the thing, uh, things that CC was looking at. Um, it, I believe we sent you what we were looking, it's the same product. Um, when we were looking at is the same one that the schools use around here, um, they're, they're on back order, I believe. Yeah, it's total 360 is, is that product, but that cleaning, but it, it's on back order right now, so we're still looking into that, and I think that's a $4,000 purchase for that system.
Okay.
Well, I'll make that motion that we, um, add additional funds for supplies for emergency management. I think the request is $20,000. Is that right, Justin?
Yes, that's right, and we going into our emergency supplies line item.
And, and I request that we take that out of contingency?
Uh, Luis, I wonder if we can take that out of risk management, or is contingency the best place? What do you think? Or, or Judge, do you know? If this is something that can come out of risk management?
Veronica, can you answer?
I think this is something that'd be better out of contingency.
Okay. I will second Luis's motion. This is Randy.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Item number seven, discuss take action on bond renewals.
Hi, this is Liz, and I'm coming to the court asking for two payments on the bond renewal for our new sheriff, um, David Kreiner. The price is $93, and the bond for our new sheriff is at 5,000. Um, that is one bond. The second bond that I'm asking for is payment in $50 for our election. This is a $5,000 bond for our elections administrator for Carolyn, and I need, um, this approved as well. The first one is 93, the second one is $50.
I'd make the motion that we renew these bonds.
This is Scott, I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight, discuss take action on senior sergeant internal affairs position.
Good morning, can y'all hear me?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Uh, this is, this is a request to change an open sergeant position to a senior sergeant internal affairs position at a grade 20, step three. Uh, the sheriff's office needs an experienced internal affairs officer to have oversight of investigations and other officers, which we do not currently have. Though it's not required by law, the liability of the office without an internal affairs officer is, is tremendous. And, uh, this will be covered through attrition, cuz we have a senior officer, senior sergeant over DEA, but when he retires, that position will be transferred over to, uh, the sheriff's office, and that is to be a regular sergeant position at that time. I gave you all a letter regarding this, also the, uh, resume of the guy I'm looking at for this position.
So when do you think this, uh, other senior sergeant, uh, DA will, uh, retire?
I'm not real sure. I haven't talked to him about retirement as of yet, Commissioner.
Well, I'd make the motion that we, uh, open a senior sergeant at grade 20 and, uh, step three and do the renaming of it.
This is Luis, I second.
It's me, it's Scott who seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item number nine, discuss take action on additional funds for a property evidence room audit.
Okay, this is what comes, comes with a new sheriff coming into town. Y'all, uh, we had a purge. We put this lady the last time. This is an actual audit of all the stuff that's in the evidence room, uh, to make it a, a clean slate when I took office.
It's the property and evidence room, correct?
Yes, sir. Uh-huh.
I don't know if you cut out or not, but I couldn't hear that part of it.
Yeah, and this is the same lady that conducted the, the purge, so she's familiar with our operations, and, uh, so we here at the maximum of five days. It's $5,000 for the, uh, audit, and then we found a motel for about 144 bucks a night. It, it could go down to be on how long it takes her to conduct the actual audit itself on the motel extensive anyways.
Well, I, I, this is Scott. I'll make the motion providing additional funds for the property and evidence room audit. Uh, I think it's an amount of $5,000 plus, uh, the expenses stated.
How do we, Commissioner?
Yeah, where are the money coming from?
I, I assume out of contingency. If you got a better place, uh, please let me know.
I think contingency is fine.
There's nothing in the sheriff's department where we can take it. David?
Nothing but dollars, no, sir.
Robin, do you have any suggestions?
No, we'll go ahead and take it out of contingency, so I'll make the motion that we do the, uh, property and evidence room audit, uh, and take the money out of contingency. Uh, 7,000 would, would do it.
Robin, Scott made that motion. Would you like to second that?
I'll second that. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 I, same sign. Motion passes.
So that is $7,000?
What was your motion, Scott? Did you make the motion?
I did it, I did it as $5,000 plus the, uh, incidental, uh, expenses as mentioned, which was the hotel room, but if you want a round number, we can do 7,000.
That's just what Commissioner Donnelly had indicated, 7,000.
Do I need to redo the, do I need to redo the motion or the person?
Well, let me redo the motion.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I'll make the motion, uh, providing an extra $7,000 from contingency for a property and evidence room audit.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Item number 10, discuss take action on the partner defense law enforcement support office application.
This is the form that used to be renewed once I took office. It's to continue the use of the sheriff's office MRAP and, and acquire other equipment as necessary from the government. It's just the formality have, uh, renewed once I took office.
David, this is Randy. Have you checked the status of getting back our armored personnel vehicle from the, that they, that they stole from us?
I've talked to the SWAT commanders, and we're, we're working on that as we speak.
Okay, thank you.
But this form here, that, that present for you guys this morning is that, uh, having continued in our possession and, uh, acquire other equipment as is made available to us, uh, like I said, needs to be signed, uh, once I took office.
I'll make the...
By the judge.
I'll make the motion, this is Randy, to, to authorize the county judge to sign this document.
This is Robin, I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Item number 11, discuss take action on 2020 Haida Grant Award.
This is another thing that, that has to be done. Once I took office, it needs to be signed by the judge to get that Haida grant and continue it.
I'd make the motion that we approve, that we authorize, uh, the county judge to sign the Haida 2020 Grant Award.
This is Luis, I second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item number 12, discuss take action on CIU cooperative work agreement.
This is another item that needs to be signed once I took office by the county judge to keep this program, uh, going, uh, forward.
Could you tell us a little bit about what this program is?
Yeah, hang on just a sec. Let me have, uh, you want me to explain it to you real quick?
Good morning.
Morning.
These are CW co- cooperative work agreements that we have with various agencies in the community that, uh, that we help, and they help us with, uh, victims.
Have the, are there any changes? Like, did you add any other? I, I see that there's a lot of, uh, uh, nonprofits on here. Were there any additions to what you've had in the past?
No, 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 sir, there wasn't.
Alright, with that, this is Luis. I'll make a motion, um, that we sign the CIU cooperative work agreements.
This is Scott. Second. Anyone?
Okay, Randy, second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13, let's take action on purchase of Tahos for DA Sheriff's Office Department.
Yes, sir, these are budgeted items. The court allowed me to send a letter of intent to purchase these vehicles back in August of 2019. We now have official quotes from reliable Chevrolet using the Sheriff's Association of Texas Cooperative Purchasing Contract. The vehicles are as follows, a DA Tahoe for $31,316.20, 10 Patrol Tahos, $30,926.20 each, 3 CID Tahos, $34,382.87 each, 2 Civil and Warrants Tahos for $34,882.20 each, and 1 Mental Health Tahoe for $34,636.20 each.
These are all budgeted, Christie, is that correct?
Yes, sir, these are all budgeted items.
Christie, who are the outfitters on these things?
The DA Tahoe, uh, they're wanting Vector Fleet to outfit. The Patrol Tahos are gonna go down to Cat Fleet. The CID and Civil and Warrants are gonna go to Dana Safety, which is also, um, fleet safety up in Fort Worth.
Well, at this time, I, I'll make the motion that, that we purchase these budgeted items, these Tahos for the DA and Sheriff's Department. I would like to, to make note that I've got some, uh, uh, some ideas in the, that we do in the future that would not lumber us with, uh, receiving what is that, 16, 17 Tahos at once and, uh, sent to different outfitters, but I would make the motion, we go ahead and purchase these and send them to the outfitters.
Okay.
Scott seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Item 14, discuss take action on quote with Wise Solutions.
This is a budgeted item, and the funds are in facilities contract service. We have a quote from Wise Solutions, the amount of $8,870. This is moved to move the county clerk records from the fifth floor storage to the records archive at the library.
This is Luis. I'll make that motion that, uh, we approve this.
This is Robin, I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Item 15, discuss take action declaring tasers as salvage.
Yes, sir, um, SO detention has 10 tasers that are old, outdated, or damaged, and we need these declared as salvage so that they may be destroyed. We cannot auction these to the general public.
This is Robin, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Luis was first. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 16, discuss take action declaring body armor panels as salvage.
Yes, SO detention is asking to declare 24 body armor panels as salvage items, um, so that they may also be destroyed. We cannot auction these to the general public either.
This is Randy, I'll make that motion.
Scott seconds.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 17, discuss take action authorizing county judge to sign RICO lease agreements.
Um, Roden Bridge and two pre-trial bonding, uh, machines and AG extension machine have current leases that are coming to an end. We just need to renew leases with new machines.
I'll make that motion to renew the leases with new machines.
This is Luis, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Item 18, discuss take action on professional service agreement with Motorola. Item eighteen, discuss take action on professional service agreement with Motorola for Spillman maintenance.
Good morning. We have a disk on the sheriff's office Spillman server that's getting a little low on space because of the operating system. We're going to engage Spillman to help us get that reconfigured to address that space issue.
So you said you're going to engage Spillman, but it says service agreement with Motorola. How does, how do they tie?
Motorola acquired Spillman.
Okay. Well, I'll make that motion to sign the professional services agreement with Motorola for Spillman maintenance. It's Scott.
This is Robin. I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item nineteen, discuss take action on temporary amendment to the Midland County Health and Dental Insurance Plan due to the federal regulations during the COVID-19 emergency.
I just spoke to Stacy by text and she said she was trying to log on. Jenny, do you see her yet?
Jenny, did you send her the new link since we changed it?
Might just, might just pass the item, give her a minute.
Yes, I don't see her in my, in the queue to let her on.
Okay, we can, we can sure come back to it and I'll get ahold of her.
Okay, all right. We'll move on to item number twenty. And take action on payment to Northeast Volunteer Fire Department.
All right, Northeast has finally turned in all their paperwork that's required for, to get their grant money. So we've got the contract signed. We just need to to sign our part of it. I know there's been some issues with them recently since the administration change about some back pay bills and talking with them. They've made a lot of progress on on their bills and getting stuff caught up. They're selling some equipment and getting some new equipment on grant money. I know they're cutting back and trying to get things squared away there.
Okay, so Justin, you and I talked the other day and I've got, I got a call from constituent, you know, talking about their lack of ability to pay their bills. Or some of them were ninety to a hundred and twenty days old. Are you convinced that they are actually paying their bills? And are you convinced that they have abided by the contract? I mean, weren't they supposed to send in all these, these documents a while back?
Um, I'm not sure on the timeline, because Greenwood just got theirs in several months ago, I think in December or January is when we finally got all their their documents in. I know there were some issues in the past where we didn't enforce that very well. And I started doing that more this year, making sure they they get that along with Jenny and Veronica, making sure they get that stuff to us. Talking with the new guys, I'm confident that they're doing what they need to do. There's obviously stuff they could probably do better. But they are making an effort and trying to get things back on track. It's, it's been a mess over there for quite a while and it's going to take some time to clean it up.
That's, that's my concern because it has been such a mess. And, you know, also, if I recall right, the last time we funded the, this fire department, the funds was fifty thousand dollars. And I think I saw on our backup, it's a hundred thousand dollars. I don't know when that changed, but I don't remember.
It changed in this next, this last budget. Each, our department went to a hundred thousand instead of radios and trucks and this and that.
Well, isn't that something that the commissioner's court should have to vote on?
Russell? Actually put it, it was in the budgets.
It was in, yeah. That was in the budget.
So it was, it was approved in the budget, but it is up to the court to approve actually giving them the amount in the contract. And so that's what we're doing right now. If you approve this contract with this amount, then it's approved. But the court does the option at this point to not approve, giving them that total amount.
I'm just, I'm sorry, but I'm just real skeptical of this, of this group, and I'm a little concerned about it, but I'll, well, I will go with what Justin is saying, that he feels comfortable with what they're doing, but just as soon as it, it goes south, we need to know.
Yeah, I would say.
We changed the, the amount. I mean, like I said, these guys are working on it, but they're not, they're not there yet. So the contract and the budget was for a hundred thousand, so that's why I brought it up that way. But whatever the court decides on giving them, I mean, we're over six months through the year anyway, and they've already just now started getting stuff to us. But like I said, there is more of an effort, but the amount is completely up to you gentlemen.
Justin, I do have a question in regards to the change that happened in that office. When you said that there was a change, was it a complete change? Is everybody, I'm looking at the signature, or all these people knew? Yes. The fire chief, the treasurer, the secretary.
Elgar, he was there during the last minister. He was the assistant chief.
Okay.
And then the, the chief Matt McClure left and there was a big falling out and they probably lost, I'd say, with fifty percent of the, the members. And so they're, they're growing again, getting stuff back on track. They're getting out of the EMS business, which is something we had issues with.
Good.
So like I said, there's a lot of issues that have been corrected, but like I said, they're nowhere near a hundred percent yet. So we still got some growing.
Yes, sir. Well, I believe that if, you know, since they are making those changes, I think they, they're showing that they're wanting, wanting to work with us. And definitely I agree with, with Scott. We need to know, you know, give us any update if anything starts going south. But I believe that they need an opportunity to be able to kind of catch back and be where they need to be. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we pay this a hundred thousand dollars to the Northeast Volunteer Fire Department.
I've got, I've got one last statement. Would it be better to cut that amount in half and watch what happens and then later on, if they do abide by the contract, they pay their bills, they do what they say, then they can get it the other fifty, because we can't claw it back.
God, I, I believe that if I'm, correct me if I'm not wrong, Veronica, this is only done by quarters. We only pay them a certain amount each quarter. And then, but the total amount is the hundred thousand, but at this point in time, we would probably only pay them fifty thousand because that's the first two quarters of the fiscal year, right, Veronica?
Well, it used to be the case. I believe that those current contracts, the MOUs that were drafted indicate that we're paying the full amount, Commissioner.
What did we do to Greenwood Fire Department this year? Is anybody?
The same. The same thing.
I can understand.
The full amount because that's how the MOUs are written.
Doing fifty fifty, but to set a benchmark. Justin, do you know if their bills are more than a hundred dollar, a hundred thousand dollars?
Talking with Cody the other day, they paid off fifty thousand and they still have another twenty five thousand, I believe. It's actually going to be fifty because they got a twenty five thousand dollar truck coming in. But their total bill right now is about twenty five thousand. And the contract also states that they can't use this money for anything other than firefighting activities or related to that. And they're required to, I think by July, if I'm not mistaken, Veronica, provide us proof of how they've spent that money so far this year. But it's below a hundred thousand, their total debt, yes.
I really believe that with the change of, of the administration over there, that we should go ahead with the, the full amount and, and in July, review it again based upon what we've, what, what they've spent and what they've spent it on. I really think that, that if we don't do it, they're so far behind right now on catching up with bills that we might put them in jeopardy. So I, I go ahead and second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay. And I believe we have Stacy with us, so I will go back to item nineteen, discuss take action on temporary amendment to the Midland County Health and Dental Insurance Plan due to federal regulations during this COVID-19 emergency.
Morning, Stacy.
Good morning, Stacy.
Stacy, can you hear us? Stacy. She is right here and I sent her a message. Okay. She needs to turn on her audio. I just sent her a message. Okay, I have her phone number. Right here. We're going to call her. I'm going to mute.
Do we want to move on to twenty one and come back again?
I think we should, Judge.
Okay, item twenty one, discuss take action on contract with Mode Communications. This is something I was doing. And doing our calendar for this year's budget, a lot of things, we're going through my mind. I had asked different questions of how, well, I got input from different commissioners of how last year's budget process went. In doing that, I got to talking to some city council people and former mayor and some folks that go through. And I kept hearing the word retreat. So when trying to think that out, I kept being directed to somebody who might could help me with coming up with a plan. And that was Mode Communications. And I got to talking to them. I kind of what was being laid out and a new way of getting everybody's input. Also in talking with what's going on in COVID-19 stuff, just a comment that I had made of all the information we're getting, which is very important information, but it's more on the negative side. I was trying to come up with some way to come up with a positive set of information on the health of our community and not so much on the the illness of our community. And I don't mean to take away what all the hospitals doing and what all, all the numbers that are coming out, but I wanted some other criteria. And in visiting with John about it, he had a great idea. And literally within four days, we launched something that we hope is going to give us another piece of information. It's not the all saw ball to it, but it's just something else. There's a lot of decisions to be made now. And this is just another, just literally another tool in arsenal, I hope, that we can use. So with that, I believe Russell got the contract out. I think everybody has seen what we call, what we launched and called Chat, County Health Assessment Tool. I believe as of last night, we had about six hundred responders. We were hoping for a thousand. And literally in about four days, we've got six hundred. So we're hoping by tomorrow, we'll be doing some stuff on Facebook today that we can get the thousand. That'll give the information some form of legitimacy. So with that, that's, that's what I had. If there's any question, the comments.
Do you have a estimate on
on the chat? On chat, roughly five thousand.
Okay, I've, I've got, I've got a lot of questions on this one. Some of which have already been answered. I'll just go through them because some of them have been answered. When did the discussion of this texting app begin? You talked about that. And my next one was, has it been built? And you talk, it's been built, it's been launched. That's correct, right?
Yes, yes, it's up and running and people are answering.
So we've got a contract here that says nature services to a mode will design and implement a texting based product to gauge changes to the general health of the community during the COVID-19 pandemic as more fully described in exhibit A. Didn't this app get built and launched prior to approval by the commissioner's court?
I wasn't aware that I needed approval, to be real honest with you. I thought based on a line item I have that this could be done. I had discussed and, and thought I was doing the right thing and Russell changed my mind.
So Russell, what did, what was your advice?
So there, I believe there's been a misconception, not just, this statement doesn't just apply to this, but just kind of countywide, that if somebody has money in their budget for professional services or a similar item to that, that they do not need approval from the commissioner's court to actually proceed with getting those services, which is not correct. And that's not just, that's not just Judge Johnson. I believe that's something that a number of people have kind of developed a misunderstanding about. So when I learned about this, I talked to the judge and talked to Veronica and got it straightened out that there actually, it does require commissioner's court approval in the contract.
Okay.
And one of the assumptions that I was working under is this is, this is an emergency and as the head of emergency management, it was a tool I genuinely felt could be used and the decisions that have to be made. And so that was kind of the direction I was going.
Okay, so the other part of this is to facilitate a strategic planning meeting for the county, Midland County Commissioners Court. And then it goes down here, the fee is a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. So what is the estimate for Mode Communications bill for this strategic planning meeting?
I haven't asked for an estimate on that. As I have sent emails out asking for a day for us to get together as a group. I mean, I'm looking at probably some prep time with, with Mode a little bit and then probably a day and then probably a little bit of report time from Mode. So that, that would be, I can get an estimate, but that I would figure a couple of days.
Well, here, here's my opinion on that part of it. Well, first of all, I'm, I'm not in agreement with the app either. I think it's going to have limited use. It's not scientific. It can actually be misused. So I'm just, I'm not a big proponent of apps. Maybe it's my age. I don't know. I don't, I just don't, I don't see the benefit in the cost of the county. The other part, as far as the strategic planning meeting, kind of added it up, I'm give or take, current commissioner's court has about fifty years of combined experience with the county budget. That doesn't even include the amount of time they have with their own companies budgeting this. One member, which is Randy, was on the court when they didn't even have enough money to pay their bills. They budgeted through everything. It's just my opinion is that we do not need an outside facilitator trying to come in and tell this experienced court what we need to do. We, you know, this, we are in a time of crisis, both the COVID-19 and the drop in the price of oil. We have to be good stewards of the county's money. And it's my opinion, may not be anybody else's, that this is not what we need to be spending money on.
You know, I'm going to jump in and just, Scott, I'll have to disagree with you a little bit. In the past, we have had retreats for Midland County, where we've gotten all the elected officials and department heads together to be able to speak together and have all the commissioners all at once. And some of the fruits out of those meetings that we've had, those retreats are things that we're doing now. An example is the Impex program. Another thing is looking at the expansion of the An example is the Impax program. Another thing is looking at the expansion of the jail. This courthouse, there's been a lot of things that we've been able to talk about with all the elected officials and department heads just all at once. So this isn't something new. It's something that we've done in the past and you know, I'll leave it to Robin and Randy to expand on it a little bit if they'd like, because they've been here longer. But since I've been here, there, there has been a couple of these retreats and I found it very fruitful.
Okay, let's, let's back up for a second. Did you ever pay a outside facilitator $150 an hour to come and help you?
That, that I don't know. I can't answer that question because I don't know. All I'm talking to is the fact that there was a, that we've had retreats in the past.
And, and all I'm talking about is this contract.
Right, right.
I'm not saying anything whether the meeting's not warranted. I think five months for the budget is plenty of time. We don't need to push it into six months. But I am completely against paying an outside person $150 an hour out of our budget dollars that we could use for something else, possibly even, you know, maintaining other people's salaries. We can talk together. You want to get together, let's get together. But we don't need somebody facilitating this deal. And I also don't want to have a app built without the court's consent. So
Right, to our attention now, now that the judge knows that we should have done, been done this way. So I think that's what we're discussing now in regards to this app. But anyway, I, I just wanted to make that statement real quick. I don't know. Robin, Randy, in, in the past, when we've had these retreats, the facilitators, were they paid? That's the question I wouldn't be able to answer because I don't know.
That, that's a good question. Go ahead, Russell.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, they have been paid. I'm trying to find out the contract from the last one we did, but to see if it has the amount. Everyone has been paid. I just off the top of my head, can't tell you what the amount was.
Can I enter real quick?
Please.
We did pay Steve Slossland in 2016, $10,000. And that was for Phase Two.
Wow.
That's the only one that
Christie, what is Phase Two? What does that mean?
It was, it just says Phase Two Services.
Oh, is that the name of the company?
Secondary. That was the secondary, the second. He, he did a first deal and then he came back the next year on the impact study.
Oh, that's right.
It was the visit, the vision.
The mission, vision, yes.
Okay, so we have paid people in the past.
Yeah, I, the, the thing is that, that I understand where you're coming from, Scott. The, we have paid facilitators in the past. It's, we usually do a, a all in. This is a local facilitator, so there's no expenses. I'm certain that's why Steve Slossland was paid a, a total amount. The, the the scoping of, of this agreement is pretty insufficient to see what we're actually gonna do. But we have paid in the past for a facilitator to come in and discuss a general overall plan of the county, either in facilities. We did one on facilities. We did one on, on just general, what does the county need? And the county needs were what we looked at before. I, I don't know exactly what the, what the scope of, of this discussion would be. But that's kind of where I am at this point is, is if I knew a little better scope, I'd be in a better situation to, to, to make a decision on this. Just to be in a facilitator is, is, is difficult. I, I, I hope Russell can find that contract that we signed before because I believe it had an outline of scope on it.
One of the things that was, that I was discussing that I want to see accomplished was what does Midland County, what direction do we as a group want to prioritize for the next budget year and then possibly look at some long range plans for the next, a five year plan, depending on time constraints, if we could accomplish that.
Judge, if that's something that you want to do, I, I'll have to agree with Robin. Is there any way that we can put that in this? Well, I'm trying to read it real quick into the services agreement to where it's more specified in here and this way, as we sign it, it'll say exactly what you're talking about, just to kind of give us some direction of what we're trying to do, what the end game is or the end result of, of trying to do with this group. What is it called?
Mode.
Mode Communications?
Russell, do you have any?
The, the, I just put down general language basically because I wasn't sure what direction it would be going. So if the court approves this subject to adding language specifying exactly what's going to be done, that can certainly be added. If y'all want to just talk about it and then make a motion that includes that, that's no problem.
Christie, do you have a copy of this contract?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
I think approving a contract subject to that is not advisable. I mean, you're, again, you're, you're signing a blank contract at that point in time.
You could also place a limit on the total amount that would be paid, if that's helpful.
Russell, I always thought previously that these professional services line items were, were independent of, I mean, you were approved to, to, to contract as long as you had money to do it. Is that incorrect now?
That is incorrect. I think that is, that has been a misconception. Every contract has to be approved by the Commissioners' Court and just because somebody like, for example, if money is put in my budget for professional services, I still have to get approval from the court to spend those on a particular purpose. That's just giving me money that I can then try to get approval from the court for a particular service. But everything has to be approved by the Commissioners' Court as a whole.
Does that include engagement of attorneys and stuff?
Yes, a lot of times with the, and, and we have done that in the past. We have approved hiring different attorneys and sometimes it's the insurance company in the event of litigation that actually hires the outside counsel.
So do we want to wait to see we can get a, see what the contract was in the past or, you know, because in the, we have done where we approve these contracts with some changes according to, you know, with Russell's advice. So that wouldn't be anything new that we've done here. I do, my question is, do we want to wait and see what the previous contract was when we did it with Steve Slotin, or I can't recall his name? And similarities, is that, I'm just trying to understand where we need to be at here.
Well, I think the judge has a, has specific things in mind that he wants to scope this to.
Right.
Judge, did you get a, do you have a time when everybody thought they could get together?
I was shooting for the latest in April as possible, the 30th, I believe. I don't have a calendar with me now. Scott wasn't able to make the Tuesday, so we were shooting for a Thursday. I'd like to get as late in April as we could to see what the governor's plans were going to be. Do we do it here over Zoom? Could we do it in person? Could we do it in person spaced way out?
Well, is there a possibility we could bring this back into the 27th Court for approval?
I mean, it's up to y'all.
I, I prefer to table it until we had a, a scope on this.
If I could interject, I do think that at least action should be taken with regard to the part of the contract that has to do with the texting or chat app, or I guess it's not an app, but the texting or chat product.
Well, is that, is that taken out of emergency management?
I was hoping to take it out of a professional services line in my budget.
Terry, this is Randy. Would you elaborate a little bit on what you're hoping the results of the chat will be so you can, maybe we can have a fuller understanding of the purpose of it?
Like I say, in the beginning, what got the conversation going was all of the for lack of a better way of putting it, all the negative information we're hearing coming out, the, the number of people testing, the number of people being positive, the number of people dying. I was kind of trying to come up with a way, how do we come up with some different information? Information that, tell you right now, out of the 600 and something, about 9% of the people are having, are saying they're having symptoms. That doesn't mean anything until you get some trend out and it's going to take a number of folks, hopefully a, a thousand people or better. And it's going to take a couple of weeks to get the trend to go. They'll be asked this question three times a week. It's just some way of coming up with something to try to help make some of the decisions that we're having to make weekly on this crisis.
Did, do you think, you know, John James is the guy that's the, the mastermind of this app? Is that, was it his, his child or what do you call it, brain, his idea?
Yes.
I, I, in, in all my dealings with John over the years, I found him to be extremely creative and, and bright. And I'd love to hear him describe this more and also his ability to lead this, this group. I actually, Terry, want to commend you for putting together a retreat. I, I think it's time for us to do that. I think it would be very beneficial. As Luis mentioned, we came up with some really good things. We, we probably hired about four or five people over my tenure to do a retreat and I, I think that the results that have come out of these things have been very, very, very positive. I know that we've paid everyone that we've, we've had. However, I would love to hear. I, I think John would really be able to explain what he can do for us. I would love for us to all hear that at the same time, Terry, unless you, unless you can really, unless you feel like you have that summary in your own mind right now.
No, mainly he'll just be doing the direction of myself. I mean, what I was attempting to do.
Okay.
We're all entitled to our, our opinions. Scott's certainly entitled to his. It's a shame. We're in a time of crisis in our health. We're in a time of crisis with our oil industry. We're in a time of crisis. All, anything we can bring to bear to help to create a a budget for the taxpayers in Midland County that is prudent and acceptable. I can't believe that a few thousand dollars spent for something like that is, is a waste of money. There's other things that money is wasted on. I won't go into those topics, but I think we know what I'm referring to. We can get in this kind of discussion or we can have somebody help guide us and direct us and keep us on track and try to come up with the priorities for Midland County taxpayers for the next 12 months, the next budget year. And what would be a great direction for the county to go for the next five years possibly?
I'd like to interject real quick, and I'm going to go back to the texting, this chat. And I did go in there and of course, on the part where it says, why do we need to chat? One of the things that stood out for me is the fact that this is going to be information that is on time and active right now, instead of having to wait one or two weeks to figure out what we need to do. I think this is going to be very proactive on our end. Especially right now, Judge, am I understanding this correctly? Have about, or you have about 600 people who have already signed up for this app? Is that correct?
Correct, in about five days, less than five days.
No, no, but what's the number that you, that you mentioned are?
It's about 600 people, yes.
Okay, so I mean, for the 600 people who already signed up, and we haven't really done much promotion on it, I don't think there's been any promotion on it. You know, the numbers are already coming in. I, I'm a big proponent about texting things just because I know it's so easy. It would be very helpful for us. And I like the fact that on here it says, give people an opportunity to say, hey, you know, I feel like I'm having symptoms. Kind of gives people a hope of, at least there's something in Midland to say, hey, what do I do next? Since we don't have enough COVID tests out here to be able to test everyone. I think this is something better than nothing. I like what I'm reading here. I truly believe that this would be something that would be, yeah, I, I say, let's try it, see, see if it works. See if it's something that we can do. Again, I'm going to go back to the statement of saying that I think that this is very proactive and I'd hate for us to be reactive. You know, later on, something happens, said, man, we wish we could have done, you know, this or that. Seems to me of what I'm reading on this chat, it seems like it's going to work because again, you're coordinating a lot of people within the community that need to be coordinated to give us at least some type of information. Right now, we don't have information or a place to bring that information together. And what I'm seeing here, I think this is a great way to start. Is this, on this chat, it, does it have to be? Let's see here. Would we have to sign the contract with Mode Communications for this chat to be approved or can this be something separate from? From that, I'm just trying to figure out because I know we're, these are two separate things. You're, you're talking about that. And then we're talking about the retreat for the county.
They can be, Commissioner, they can be separate items. I put them all in one contract, but it could be broken up. I did just send a text to, to John James, he'd be happy to join in and answer the questions from the court. I'm looking at you Jenny, somebody else would have to figure out how to get him involved in this.
Do we want to table it?
Send them the, the link if you'd like.
I think if we can do that, because if I'm not mistaken, I see Stacy is on here now. We want to go back.
Or I can send him or we can call him.
Well, why don't we just table it until the 27?
Well, we can do that too. It's up to you guys.
That's what I'd like to do.
Just let me know.
Well, I put it on here because I was wanting to do something today.
Yeah.
You know, my view, this is an unscientific study. I, I don't believe in it, but we can table it. It doesn't matter to me. It's, if this thing's just ripe for abuse, people out there, the keyboard warriors getting out there going, look, I'm going to mess with these guys. There's nothing scientific about it and it could give us bogus information.
I think this is an opportunity. Again, I'm going to go back to my statement of giving people an opportunity to give their information somewhere. Right now, we don't have anywhere that people can go and give this type of information. So I'll go back and say that that's the part that I like about this, this texting thing. It's very easy and I think it's, this is better than nothing.
And it's easily abused and it's not scientific. So we can leave it.
It goes by phone numbers, so unless you got more than one phone number, unless you got a bank of phone numbers, because it's all tied to one number. So there's no way to abuse it more than the number of iPhones you can buy with a phone number attached to it.
The, the abuse can be people just lying. And they're going to mess with you. Oh, look at this. I'm going to say that I've got all this. We've seen the reports of women on, going around in grocery stores threatening to spread the coronavirus. There's people out there that do crazy stuff. So there's not a, there's nothing in this deal that says it's scientific. And since it's not scientific, it, I don't, I'm not going to believe you know, what, what is thrown out there. I think in theory, it's a great deal, but if, if you want to base it on, you know, scientific study, it's not there.
I believe that, yeah, I have more trust in our, in our community than that, Scott. I don't believe that you would have over 90% of the people going in there trying to put information like that, that is false. I understand you're going to have a few people here and there, but I have a better faith in our community that people wouldn't be doing that. They would be going in there and doing something like this purposely.
If I can, I disagree with that. If you don't mind me interjecting again, John James has texted me again and he would like to address the court because of the continued conversation about it. So if y'all want to hear from him, I'll let, leave it to Jenny to facilitate that.
I do. I mean, it's already on the agenda and I mean, we're here. It seems like everybody's got questions. I'd like to know more about it. Sure. Sure.
And one of the good things that I like about it, we only, once you set up and it only takes you a minute to get set up, you're asked this one question of three symptoms. Do you have them? Yes or no? If we find a couple of weeks down the road, this is not telling us what we would be looking at. We can alter the question, revise it, totally change it. We can make this question, are the information from this available to the medical professionals? If they want to see something modified, they can certainly use their input. This is a tool. That's all it is, just a piece. It's not the end all scientific study. And where are we with coronavirus? It's just some information and it gives us trend. Trend is important.
Just send him the link.
Do we want to go back to 19 while he's looking possibly?
Yes.
Out of 19, just take action on temporary amendment to the Midland County Dental Insurance Plan due to federal regulations during the COVID-19 emergency. Did we lose Stacy? No, there, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Good morning.
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 Well, good to see y'all's faces. And I appreciate y'all, obviously, this, I hope this isn't our new normal, but I appreciate y'all allowing me to join via video today. So do you just want me to jump into this amendment and kind of what the purpose is?
Yes, please.
Jump into it. Okay. So we issued you guys an amendment and we're doing this, we're presenting this amendment in a little different manner than what we typically do. We've presented this amendment from the standpoint of, it's a temporary amendment. The Families First Coronavirus Response Act was passed a few weeks ago on March 18th. And then subsequent to that, the CARES Act was released. And there's some additional coverage items that will come out a little bit later that are tied to the CARES Act. But right now, these were some immediate things that we needed to change in the plan document, just temporarily. So as a result of those two regulations, all health plans, with no exceptions, all health plans must require, must cover the testing associated with COVID-19 at 100%. And that particular requirement to cover the testing also expands to any services directly related to the testing. So if you went in for a doctor's visit and you, that doctor decided, checked all the boxes, you needed to be tested for COVID-19, then you would be incurring a doctor's visit and maybe a few other administrative service type charges associated with the testing. Same thing if you went and presented at the ER, there's additional charges that would come along with that testing for COVID-19. And so the health plan has to cover those without exception. Anything specifically related to that and that particular visit covered 100%, no deductible, no cost sharing with the member at all, no copay or anything. So that part's really, now you're only required to cover that during the emergency period. So what we've done with this amendment is we've actually, I've put in the minimum requirements, but also put in some additional above and beyond requirements and I'll explain why we've, why we're recommending to go a little bit further. So the Families First Coronavirus Response Act was passed on March 18th. So technically, your health plan is only required to cover the testing at 100% starting March 18th. However, we have recommended across the board for our clients that we backdate it back to when the emergency was initially declared. Because there is a chance, even if you're not seeing a ton of activity around it in your own community, there is a chance that you, there are some members that could have had the testing done prior to the requirement of March 18th. And we didn't want you to have to come back and say, okay, well, since March 18th, you're paying 100% for testing, but prior to that, this one or two people that had testing done, it's still deductible, copay, coinsurance. So we're just saying, let's cover the entire emergency period. That is our recommendation. You're only required to cover this during the emergency period at 100%. After that, it can revert back to regular benefits. So this amendment is set to expire, we recommend it, it's set to expire at the same time that the additional leave requirements, leave of absence requirements expire. Those, the leave of absence requirements expire December 31st. And so we just said, instead of us, you know, waiting for whenever they're going to, you know, call the stop to the emergency period, let's just go ahead and let these all sudden set at the same time, December 31st, 2020. Now, that's not to say that you guys as a commissioner's court may decide this is a provision or coverage that you want to stay in the plan long term. You want to keep it at 100% benefit. Obviously, this is going to be something we're going to deal with again. And so, but this gives us time to get through this emergency period. There also is, there's an expectation that there's some additional legal requirements or that this might even be a long-term required coverage under the health plan. For now, we're just speaking about the testing. We're saying it has to be covered 100%. That's what the law requires. So what we've done is we've said, under number one on this amendment, you can see, now, the, excuse me, let me back up. So the second paragraph on the amendment, you can see there's some language in there about, you know, as this continues to evolve, as additional regulations or clarifications come out, we're saying, look, we intend to be compliant with whatever the laws are as they're passed. So we don't have to keep coming back to you every time they make another tweak or they add another particular provision. And so that's why we've added the second paragraph. You already had some language in your plan doc talking about the conformity of laws in general to make sure if there's ever a conflict with your plan that the plan's intent is to always be legally compliant. So that's why, but we just wanted to add some additional clarification there under the second paragraph. Under number one of this amendment is, we've broken down, in that box, you'll see there's three line items. The first one is in relation to the testing, which I've kind of already gone over that with you. There's some requirements around that, whether the testing is in the emergency room, a doctor's office, a telehealth visit, whatever those services are specifically related to the testing. We don't have an option. We're going to have to pay those at 100%. Of course, there's no pre-certification required for those types of services. And the plan's maximum eligible charges will apply. So the one thing that came out of the CARES Act about paying for these services, we do have to cover both in and out of network, which is not a problem. Your plan already allowed in and out of network utilization. The CARES Act defines how we have to pay that out of network provider. Meaning, right now, your plan for any out of network provider, the plan takes 150% of Medicare. That's how much of the bill, so if that doctor, any doctor, this, any normal doctor, the doctor charges $150 for an office visit and it's an out of network provider, and let's say the plan, since the plan allows 150% of Medicare for an office visit, if $35 is 150% of Medicare, the plan only takes that $35 and that's what's covered by the plan. And that out of network provider can balance bill the patient. In this scenario for specific to COVID testing, the, any provider who is doing, providing the COVID testing, they have to publish their cash price for that service on their website. So if we get a claim from one of those providers, we have to go to their website, find their cash price and that's the price that we have to use for an out of network provider. So that's all associated with the first box there. Again, I'm not really requesting decisions on that one because that one is mandated. The second two are not mandated yet, but they are issues that will come up. And so we're just calling it out, making sure that everybody's aware of how they're treated. So your health plan already would cover treatment of COVID-19, right? It's a medical diagnosis. It's medically necessary to be treated for COVID-19. So your plan already covers those. And the recommendation is just to cover them like any other illness. If you have a hospitalization, it goes, it falls under your hospital benefit. If it's a doctor's office visit, it falls under your doctor's office visit. This is just in relation to the treatment for a patient that's diagnosed with COVID-19. So are there any questions about the treatment piece of it? Okay. So the third line item is something that is coming up. So most health plans, unless you have a teledoc like you guys, the county added to its benefit program some time ago, most outside of a controlled offering like teledoc, most plans don't cover telehealth visits. In the past, those types of telehealth visits, there's been some fraud associated with those as with probably most areas. But telemedicine visits are definitely going to be more of the norm going forward. You're going to, even after the COVID-19 is behind us, or at least in the meantime, we'll still see people, providers accessing and using telemedicine visits, much more than we see today. So we are recommending that you cover telehealth visits, even the ones that are not related to COVID-19. I know you have teledoc already as an offering, but right now, if you have a patient who is needing to speak to his cardiologist to get the blood pressure medication, it's been a year, they need to come back in, be retested so they can get a refill of their meds, you don't want those patients going into the doctor's offices. You want that doctor to have a telehealth visit with them anytime possible as opposed to them getting out, going into the doctor's office and potentially being exposed. And so we recommend that you cover telemedicine visits, whether they use your telehealth, excuse me, whether they use teledoc or their own doctor, their own specialist or other primary care providers. We do recommend that you cover those telemedicine visits, just like any other doctor's visit though. Your regular office of copay would apply for those types of visits. So that's all under number one. Under number two, now we're going back to the meat, the back part of the plan document where the coverages and exclusions are listed. And we're saying we've added two categories here as well. The first one being any types of services specifically related to COVID-19 treatment and testing. And then the last section is just those telemedicine visits that I just talked about that are non-COVID related. So under COVID, the COVID-19, you'll see there's four main bullets. The first one is diagnostic test and under that diagnostic test bullet, there's two additional bullets. And the wording under those two bullets are almost verbatim right out of the regulations. So those are requirements. You have to cover those services in the manner that it's stated. So we won't do a deep dive there unless you have any specific questions and it calls out telemedicine specifically. The third, excuse me, the second bullet, inpatient hospital quarantines. So this is something we recommend, but you're not required. Right now, of course, hospital beds almost everywhere are few and far between for COVID-related testing and treatment. So however, and so for most, for the most part, we're seeing where patients are getting in, they're being treated, they're stabilized and for the most part, they're being released. However, there are some cases where the patient is in there. Let's say they get in, they're on the ventilator, they're treated, they're finally stabilized, they get off the ventilator. You know, it's medically necessary. There's no further reason for them to still be inpatient. So by definition of your health plan that covers a medically necessary inpatient hospital staying, that patient should be discharged at that time. There are some cases where a patient could be held another day or two for a public health reason. Not, they're not being kept inpatient for the full two-week quarantine timeframe. That's not what we're talking about. We're just talking about they may be keeping them for another day or two depending on their case in an inpatient situation. So we are recommending that we call that out. We identify that we are in those rare circumstances that we will, the plan will cover those as any other treatment under the health plan. So, because like I said, it's not a medically necessary reason at that point. It's a public health issue. They're not keeping them for the two full weeks, but if we don't call it out in your plan and we have a large claim, the reinsurance carrier could deny that last portion of the claim because quarantines technically wouldn't be covered under the plan. So we're recommending to include that. The third bullet is telemedicine. This is for treatment. This is telemedicine that's specific to the treatment of COVID-19. Maybe I'm diagnosed with COVID-19, they quarantine me to my house, but I'm not sick enough because I don't have any other health conditions. I'm not sick enough to be put in the hospital. So I'm going to, I'm going to have a doctor that's calling, having telemedicine visits with me over the phone while I'm going through that, my quarantine timeframe. So we recommend covering those as well. And the fourth bullet there is in regards to non-emergency ambulance transportation. So my hometown right here, Conroe, Texas, Conroe Regional Medical Center is not set up to take COVID-19 patients. So if someone presents in their ER with COVID-19, they load them up into an ambulance and they ship them over to Tomball Regional who is equipped to take COVID-19 patients. That's a non-emergency ambulance transport. We're recommending we call that out in the plan that we do want to cover those as well. Those are very appropriate transports, but not medically necessary as defined by the plan. The last section under there is the telemedicine visits that I mentioned earlier, that these are just, I've got a cough, cold and sniffles. I don't think I've got COVID-19. I need a prescription refill. You know, any other reasons for a medically necessary visit that you can do via telemedicine. We're saying what we want to cover those as any other doctor's visit. That's pretty much for the coverages and then it goes into the leaves, which I'll get into in just a second. Are there any questions about the coverage portion before I move on?
I do have a question. Stacy, this is Luis.
Yes, sir.
On the inpatient quarantine, the one that you just talked about, you mentioned that, so if people are, you know, they're released, they say they're good to go, but then they still have to stay in the hospital for a few extra days. Is that like to finish off the quarantine? I know that it's recommended two weeks and I know you just mentioned, you're not talking about two weeks worth of staying in the hospital, but a few days. Can you expand on that just a little bit more? I'm not understanding, you know, there's 14 days of quarantine, but then you're saying you wouldn't do the full 14. You would just do an extra two or three days? Can you clarify that for me again?
Correct. Yeah, they're not, we're not seeing hospitals keeping a patient inpatient for, just for the full, just to be quarantined. So what we're seeing, so if I was in the hospital and there was no other reason, you know, I've been better, I don't have any other complicating factors or additional risk, health factors, then they're going to release me and have me go home and self-quarantine at home. They need those hospital beds for that part. So what, but, but what, and we haven't had a case that this has happened to. However, through our partnership and associations, we are hearing of some cases and it really seems to be the super complex cases, which I mean, you know, I guess some of us could probably try to make an argument that that makes that now a medically necessary reason to stay in the hospital another day or two. And in those cases, it's basically just making sure that patient's been stabilized, their vitals, everything. So by definition of medical necessity in the healthcare field, not by Boon Chapman standard, in the healthcare field, there's not, you know, for, to keep a patient inpatient, you have to check this box of, here's the reasons why this patient still has to be here in the hospital. These patients, you can't check those boxes. However, because of the complexity of their particular medical condition or there's a number of different factors that, another set of boxes that they may be checking off that says, you know, we're going to hold this patient one extra day for quarantine, but also kind of monitoring. And so in those cases, we're saying, we don't want to run the risk of those not being covered under the reinsurance coverage if we don't call out that those would be covered. Now, you still have your prime DX team, the medical management team is still reviewing all of those cases and staying on top of those, doing concurrent review, making sure that they're, you know, communicating with the doctors, the hospitals, whatever, to make sure when it's appropriate for that patient to move out of there and self-quarantine at home, that they're doing that.
Thanks for that explanation. The last question that I have before I forget. You know, at the beginning, you started talking about dates of when this would be, would take effect. And you mentioned that you guys want to backdate it when the first, I guess, emergency call came out. At the very top of this page, where it says amendment one, and it has an effective date of January 27, 2020, is that the date that is, that you're asking that we backdate for those people who had to go or was there a separate date from that?
All of this, we're asking that you go back to that January 27th date.
And then you're asking that it remain effective? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just specific to this coverage, the coverage that's specific for COVID-19.
Right.
And for it to continue until December 31st.
Okay, thank you.
Now, it does say unless additional regulations come, you know, are released that mandate. Now, it does say unless additional regulations come, you know, are released that mandate that we extend that, but for this point, at least until now, we're saying, let's extend it to December 31. And then at that point, we may want to come back. There's some of these things you may say, you know, it's a good thing for us to always cover telemedicine visits, if someone has a telemedicine visit with their own doctor or specialist, we want to add that to the plan. We can still do that, we still have time to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so the last, number three is specifically related to the continuation of coverage. And if any of you have seen the additional requirements under, so the Families First Coronavirus Act expanded the FMLA requirements, and then some additional leaves that came out under the CARES Act as well. And the intent of this amendment is not to get into the details of those leave requirements because that's not the health plan's responsibility. You guys have set, you guys have taken whatever those requirements are, and then you also have expanded that, you guys have taken it even further, a step further. And so what we've done under here, all we're trying to do is, in case you had a, one of those individuals that was out, associated with one of those approved leaves, or even under your, the way you guys are handling the employees, and redefining what's a full-time employee, things like that, for a period of time, all we're trying to do is, we're trying to make sure that whatever you're doing is at least authorized by the medical plan document, so that if you have a large case that happens to be one of those in that those leave situations, that plan, that member is still covered. Because right now, your plan absent of this says the patient has to be a full-time employee. And full-time employee would be, you know, typically 40 hours or more, under the ACA, it's 30 hours or more. But as you know, right now, you may have some employees that aren't working that full, 30 to 40 hours a week. And so we want to make sure we put something in the plan that gives you guys the ability to say, we're going to follow our guidelines, our policies in relation to leaves, and then they're still going to be eligible for coverage under the plan. So that piece of it intentionally not vague when it comes to the specifics of the leave requirements, it's just giving you guys the authority to manage it on your personnel side. Any questions on that? All right, that's all.
Thanks a bunch, Stacy. Judge, I have this original amendment, and I'll send it over to you in our office mail. Thanks a million, Stacy.
You're welcome. Thank you. Y'all take care.
You take care.
I'd make the motion that we sign this temporary amendment to the Midland County Health and Dental Insurance Plan.
This is Luis, I second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 If you oppose, same sign, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so now I'll go back to item 21, and I'll see, we've got John James with us. Is any, John, would you like to say something based on what you know, or guys, or anything you want to ask him?
Yeah, I, first of all, thank you for having me, and thanks for the work y'all are doing under these crazy circumstances. But I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has. I only heard the tail end of the discussion right before y'all switched items, so I apologize, I wasn't glued to YouTube watching the commissioners meeting. Sorry about that.
Well, I was trying to get approval on a contract between the county and your company, kind of a two-part contract in that we're dealing with chat, which there was some discussion about, and then also dealing with a retreat, if you will, for us to work on the budget. There's some contention that chat is not scientific, so that's a reason for one guy not wanting to be in it, or want to approve it. And then there's discussion on if we need a facilitator or not, and if we've used one in the past or not, and if we've paid for one in the past or not. So that's kind of where we're at, I think, unless somebody's got another direction.
One of the things, James, is, or John, we were talking about the, what brought about the chat, what's the purpose of it, why we were doing that rather than directing them to Teladoc or to something at the hospital.
Sure, I think that's a good question. And thank you, Commissioner. Perhaps a little bit of background first, and then I'll answer your question. Couple of things. One is, my company operates in two spaces. We are a management consulting company, so I have clients all over the country that we provide management training for, we do strategic planning with. One of the companies specifically, some of you may know, maybe not the company, but certainly the owner, a company out of California called Center Staging, that is owned by Mitch Clark, who used to own a company called Tomcat, based in Midland. We do all the management training and strategic planning for his company out in Burbank, but we also operate in a tech space. So the other half of our company operates in, in tech, whether it's mobile messaging, what we call SMS or MMS, or whether it's software development. We have employees that work here in Midland, we have employees that work in various parts of the world who do coding and who do programming. As I was starting to have conversations with the judge about what, what kind of, his ideas about how to get conversations going among the commissioners, how to start doing some planning, I recommended a strategic planning retreat, and not necessarily because I had a history that y'all had or hadn't done those before, but because in just about every organization I've been involved in, including private sector and nonprofit, we have these annual gatherings where, where you can actually plan, because the old adage, if you fail to, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. And that is true when I was in city government professionally, that is true when I was on the Midland College Board of Trustees, or the city council, or even the education foundation that I was president of. But coming together and thinking about the long-term, I've always believed fundamentally, but I've seen it in action, is that you've got to do that, especially in my opinion, when you're in a role of serving taxpayers. So chat came out of that kind of discussion. The judge asked, because we were in the tech space, he said, well, what are other communities doing? What are other people doing? What are you seeing out there in the tech space as it relates to COVID-19? And quite frankly, we weren't seeing anything. And the things we were seeing were, and because we know a lot about vulnerability, and a lot about hacking, and a lot about spam, not saying we do any hacking, let me be clear, but we do know a lot about that because of the space we operate in. But nobody was doing anything that, that we saw that was useful, or that was not prone to being vulnerable. For example, you can go on the CDC's website right now and do what's called the self-check. And what you do is, you go in and you answer questions similar to the ones that we've created for chat. And the CDC recommends things similar to what we recommend on chat. The difference is, one, it's not Midland's data, and the judge was very interested in finding out how we could get information about Midland. But two, websites are prone to, they are the most vulnerable of all the technologies, with apps being kind of second, but much less so. So the CDC's own website, you go through and you answer a series of questions, and they get information. Not sure what they do with that information, but it is likely that, that you or I or somebody with a skill set like the company I own could hack that website and give them false data. So again, I'm not sure what they're doing with that data, but they do exist. A second platform that exists is on your iPhone. You can actually say, Siri, do I have coronavirus? And Siri will take you through a series of questions that try to assess whether or not you have symptoms, and Siri then recommends that you go see a doctor, or you stay at home, or those kinds of things. Most people don't know that that exists. It does exist, but then again, or there again, Siri can't tell you anything about Midland, Texas. So as I was going through all these things with the judge, he said, well, how can I get something about Midland, Texas? And I said, Judge, quite frankly, it gets back to December 3, 1993, when the first text message was sent. And it is text messaging, that is the most prolific form of communication right now. It's the thing most people are comfortable with. 98% of mobile phones can send a text message, but 98% cannot access the internet and cannot download apps. So texting in its most basic form is the way to do this if you need information. So we kind of went through, through that discussion, and I said, well, let me, let me see if I can put a demo together. And we have a lot of skills, a whole bunch of skills in this space. We're probably one of the better companies in the country where mobile messaging is concerned in terms of our skill. But I said, let me see if we can put a demo together, and I'll show you what I mean. So we put a demo together over the weekend, last weekend, got it together pretty quickly, and showed the judge that just like wearing the mask, or just like social distancing, you would be relying on voluntary information. The difference is, you would get that information three days to two weeks prior to somebody being admitted to the hospital or going to the emergency room. And that is the key. Now, it relies on people's honesty, it relies on self-reporting, but we do have data. About 700 people have opted in so far, and about 9.17% of them have said they have symptoms. And this, what we built doesn't diagnose or doesn't treat, but it is clear from what's happening on social media and what we're hearing, that, that people are responding. Now, we have some, some area codes in the system that aren't our area codes, but as we all know, those area codes are, we have a lot of people who have come from other places, so we're obviously going to have a lot of very, a lot of area codes. But we feel pretty confident about the data. I would say we have about 97% confidence that the data is good data from, from people who actually have a mobile phone. And the reason why we can have confidence about that is because in order for somebody to ping our system over and over and over again, they would have to have hundreds of thousands of mobile phones or random mobile phone numbers, but then they could never get through the system because they would never respond. It's a Q and A system, so they could ping and get the first message, but we'd send them a message that they would have to respond to, and because they wouldn't respond to that message, the system doesn't include them, and ultimately times out. So, and we've seen none of that so far, because we'll know if somebody tries to ping and isn't, isn't successful, doesn't go all the way through the system. We have had, of our numbers, we have had nine people who have opted out. The law requires that we give people instructions on how to get out of the system, so nine people have. But otherwise, everybody else has completed the system, and we have sent two responses, two follow-up questions that say, how are you doing? It's the symptoms question. And we've had about 96.3, my guys tell me, of the people who opted in originally have responded to the follow-up questions that come every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And in our case, Friday and Monday at 10:00 a.m., that question just went out, and people have responded to that. So I feel comfortable that we're getting good data. My sense is, we, we now have, I think it's eight times more data than the hospital has right now, because the hospital's only looking at who's come to the hospital, who we've tested, who we're treating, and who we've released. So we're actually getting, and this is why I think the judge thought this was a great idea, we actually have a better picture of the temperature of our community than anybody, in fact, anybody anywhere in the country, because this is the first of its kind in the entire U.S., where a county is actually getting county data before people get grossly sick with coronavirus. We're the, we're the only one in the nation doing that, that we found right now. A couple of more things I would say, because maybe my rambling has answered most of your questions. On Friday, we got a call from Pittsburgh, Kansas, asking us about the system. And today, the San Antonio Express News, or I think it's the San Antonio News now, has emailed one of our, one of our programmers, asking about a couple of things we're doing, but chat was one of them. And I think, I think that's happening because everybody's struggling with the same question. How do we take Midland's temperature, or how do we take Pittsburgh's temperature, or how do we take the temperature before we get into a bad place and have people in the hospital? So with that, I'll stop my, I'll stop my filibuster, and happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Has there anybody from the study gone to the hospital?
I think that was Commissioner Donnelly. We, we are not asking that. There's a fine line between the questions we can ask and HIPAA privacy. All we're asking them in their follow-up question is, do they have symptoms? Now, we, we stayed away from, have you gone to the hospital, or have you called your doctor? And just through some Q and A with Russell and some other physicians, that question would have to be asked very, very carefully, and I just don't have that expertise to craft that question well. But the judge has asked a similar question, can we add on additional questions? I think we can, but we'd want to make sure both Russell's, Malman Myers, are involved in kind of crafting that question, so we don't violate anybody's privacy. Generally speaking, however, this is voluntary, it's anonymous, because we don't know, Commissioner Donnelly, I don't know your phone number, so I can't tie your response to you. So because it is self-reporting, we kind of stay outside of the realm of HIPAA. But as we get deeper into people's personal behavior and activities, I think we'll want to have some... I think we'll want to have some experts kind of help us ma- uh, mold and shape those questions.
John, this is Luis. Um, first of all, I want to thank you for uh, explaining some of this stuff to us. Thanks also giving us that information in regards to um, h- how this works, the fact that a message is sent and then if a person does not respond to that message, guess it stops that phone number. Is that number like purged out of the system because they're not responding to the initial text?
It, it's actually not purged out of the system, but because it's in the system, it's prevented from, it's prevented from re-entering the system. We, we keep that number so it can't keep hitting the system again. And um, unless they say stop and then start again, that number won't be revived. So a, a very clever person who is trying to ping the system would have to program, and it's very hard to do, would have to program this kind of bogus number to hit the system, read what we send back, answer that question and keep on going. And they would have to do it with multiple numbers. And if they're doing it with multiple numbers, and this is more than you want to know, but I'm a geek on these kinds of things. But if they did it with multiple random numbers, the uh, for example, if somebody just randomly sent my phone number from a computer trying to hack the system or ping the system, I would get all the questions. My, my phone, not, not the computer that sent the phone number. And so this is, we keep those numbers because we want to make sure that we prevent people from abusing the system. But they can't do anything unless they literally stop and then ask the system to start again. That number's just frozen and we keep that for that very reason.
Awesome. Thanks for that. And I think that was one of the concerns, you know, that people might go on there, get false information and abuse the system. But it seems to me that the way that you have it set up, it's very, very difficult uh, for that to happen. Uh, just want to highlight a couple of other things that you talked about. You know, you mentioned there's about seven hundred people who've signed up and less than one percent of one percent have opted out. I, I think that's, those are great numbers that you've only had enough people who have opted out. Um, a- and I also think that it's uh, it's good to hear. Um, I mean, be- being a commissioner and this having to do with Midland County, you're saying that eight times more data than the hospital has right now? Uh, again, this is a very good um, thing for us to know that we're actually getting data, just in case, you know, God forbid that this thing goes, you know, gets crazier. Kind of giving the hospital an idea of saying, you know, we're getting all these people all of a sudden now reporting. Uh, because right now there i- is no place to report, uh, un- unless you go to the hospital, like you mentioned. I think this is a great tool. Uh, and I had been talking about this earlier, uh, John, that it's a great preventative measure, you know, we want to
Absolutely.
And not reactive. And I think this is a very good proactive uh, system that you've got here. So a- again, thanks for giving us that information. Give us more than what I was, I was expecting and um, no, but, but this is good. This is how, you know, it allows us to understand this, this system better. So again, thank you.
Well, the, it's my pleasure, Commissioner, my pleasure, Commissioner. Um, just on, in that regard, uh, the city manager from Pittsburgh, Kansas that called, um, he, his questions were along this, that very same lines. Um, we're, we're, he said, we're trying to figure out whether we need more beds. And we can't figure that out by just, by just having people go into the hospital because by then it's too late.
Right.
And he said, if we could have some system that asks people their symptoms and we get a sense of that, then if symptoms are starting to increase, that gives our hospital time to start saying, well, do we need more beds? Do we need more PPE? Do we need more of those things? So I think your observation about the, the advanced information that we'll be getting, I think that's dead on. That is exactly right.
Hey, John, this is Scott. Um, I have no doubt that the technical side of this deal is unhackable. Um, I do have absolute faith in that, but I do not have faith in the scientific qual- quality of the data. Here's an example. You said seven hundred people have signed up. What is telling you that of those seven hundred, six hundred of those people are not just your run-of-the-mill hypochondriac? That would, if you said an eboli uh, outbreak came up, they'd say, I've got ebolic symptoms. You know, how are you, how are you coming up with the difference between uh, just your regular flu symptoms early on? You know, the, that's where I'm talking about. I'm talking about, you know, it's just, it's just totally unscientific because it's just people signing up for something and they can't be vetted at all.
Right. A couple of things I would say, Commissioner, and that is a very good question. I think we struggled with that initially. Um, a couple of things. One, if you opt into chat, it's very clear that chat reminds you and advises you that it's not intended to treat or diagnose. It is simply a gauge, like taking the temperature. But with nine point one seven percent of people saying they do have symptoms, that tells you that this isn't seven hundred hypochondriacs because we would have seven hundred people saying they have symptoms. And then if you look at US data.
Let me interrupt, let me interrupt you just real quick. You've got nine percent of, of a seven hundred uh, percent sample. And we've got thirty-one cases in a, a city or a county of over two hundred pe- two hundred thousand people. Doesn't that kind of tell you right there that uh, your numbers could be off?
You know what, uh, I, I gotta tell you, um, I think it's sort of like wearing a mask. Um, we don't know, we have no data, none, nothing scientific that says wearing a mask helps. We think it does, but, but we don't, we don't have, all we're doing is correlating wearing the mask to uh, a flattening of the curve, but we don't know. There could be all kinds of other things. By the CDC's own admission, there could be all kinds of other things that are impacting that. People and their social distancing, people doing other things. All this is intended to be is one additional indicator. And I think, I gotta be honest with you, Commissioner, I think the number is off. But the reason I think it's off is because we, we want to get, and I'm a professional marketer. You want to get greater participation because the more participation you get, the closer you come to accuracy. Um, and so right now, I think the people who have opted in are people who are really the first people who are wearing masks. They were probably the first people who were social distancing. They're the people who said, oh, this is a good thing to do. We gotta do this. They're the, they're kind of like me. They're the rule followers, right? Well, I think you'll see in a week as those numbers grow, you'll have a better sample. And that's what you want. Um, just like we're doing with masks. When I went to Walmart the other day, one in ten people in line were wearing masks. When I went yesterday, looked like about two in ten people were wearing masks. So the messaging about wearing masks is ultimately working, but you, you, you ultimately just need to increase your population size and you'll get, you'll get good data. But I will tell you, and this comes, this comes directly from the C- CDC, some data is better than no data. And, and that's what we're trying to do here is get some data. And I, I would imagine will be oh, well over a thousand people um, by the end of the week. Just based on uh, what people are talking about and how this thing is moving, but some data is certainly better than no data.
Some scientifically proven data isn't better than no data. Again, with this deal, if you got nine percent, that means you're somewhere in the neighborhood of seventeen, eighteen thousand people. If you extrapolate that out in Midland County that have symptoms. Uh, that's, that's a little rough for me. Um, so I, again, I, I think there's just the, the way i- it can be skewed. The data can be skewed just because of the type of people uh, responding and the, some of the, uh, some of the respondents uh, trying to have a little fun with it.
Um, Commissioner, I would, I would encourage you to go to US data that um, that kind of tracks this stuff. Um, the numbers we have are actually fairly consistent, plus or minus a couple of percentage points than what they're seeing across, across the country. And US data is pretty reputable. Um, that's not to say that their numbers, their information is wrong, so ours is wrong or vice versa. It's just saying that, you know, there, there's probably enough data about symptomatology out there that suggests that we, it might be about right. The, the other thing I would add is this is about longitudinal. It's not about today and it's not about tomorrow's data. It's about, um, a- and again, I'm, I'm a professional marketer. We look at this stuff all the time. This is about long, over, over a period of time, what are the changes? Because last week, guess what? I had symptoms, but it was because of the change in weather. This week I reported, no, uh, I don't have symptoms. I didn't have a runny nose or anything like that. But over time, you're gonna get good data and that's what science is. It measures most things, especially where viruses are concerned. The CDC is trying to look at this over time. We've got to look at it, in my opinion, we've got to look at it the same way. But I, I certainly hear and appreciate what you're saying. I'm a political scientist by, by training, uh, by academic and uh, the professional training and um, n- numbers tell a story. They don't always tell the whole story. But i- in my line of work, you'd rather have numbers than not have numbers. I think I lost y'all.
No, the we have two separate issues that we're trying to deal with. One is, is uh, a professional contractor, professional services contract that's being brought to us after the fact. The other thing is to try to determine the scope of the uh, of the uh, strategic planning session that you're, that's being proposed. And, and that's very generalized under the contract that we have. Concerns uh, about the direction. I, I think the, the uh, the chat issue is, is something that, that we need, that we need to discuss further separately from this one. Because uh, it's a technical situation between mom and the, and the court. Not between us and, and, and uh, trying to figure out what to do because i- it's actually done. Uh, you've provided the services. Uh, it's, it's a matter of the, i- if we were to talk about this on the front end, it would be a different discussion than talking about it after the, after everything is accomplished. And I, I think that's the, the consideration that we're trying to figure out is, is what would we have done on the front end and how would if we have, have couched this or set up a contract for it? And what would the expectations have been for it at that time versus what has been done? Good, bad or indifferent? I mean, it's been done. And I, and I have the, the feeling that, that Russell would say, you know, the guy did it in good, good faith and it's set up and it's in running and we gotta go forward with it because we kind of verbally have agreed on the contract according to, to the judge and, and, and Russell. And so it's, it's a real difficult situation.
Sure.
I would split this out and say, you know, maybe I would have thought differently or discussed it differently as, as Scott's talking about. But the, the deal's done. He's provided the services and we need to, to, to compensate him for that regardless of what we believe the end result is. And then figure out what we're gonna do on the, on the, on the mode, uh, strategic planning. Is that what you think, Russell?
Um, yeah, basically, yes. I, um, I, I, we have, there have been situations in the past when uh, a contract had not been done before services were performed, but it was, it was approved after the fact. Um, it's obviously not what I prefer to have happen, but it has happened in the past. This is not the first time. Uh, and there is absolutely no problem with separating these two out. If the court is not ready uh, to uh, do the contract for the strategic planning, uh, then those can absolutely be two contracts. Only reason I, in fact, only reason I did it is one contract was just we could get it all in today. Uh, but uh, it would certainly make sense even to have those in two separate contracts.
I'm gonna hold. I'm sorry.
Sorry, uh, um, we did find it's, it's unsigned, but I think it's the uh, the uh, contract from uh, Mr. Soslin from several years ago uh, for the uh, strategic planning retreat we did. Um, so we can look at that. I don't know if what would be wanting to do though now is the same thing. A lot of that had to do with the five-year, a, a five-year plan and things like that. And I don't know if that's
What I want to see on that part of it, just like Robin was saying, I want to see the scope of it. And I want to come up with some sort of idea about how much it's cost. Now, you know, I've had two commissioners tell me, or maybe even three of them that have been here obviously longer, I have, that, that there have been these retreats and there have been facilitators. Okay, that's, that's some information I didn't have. Uh, I'm fine with that. I've always have been as far as the retreat. I just was unaware of the facilitator uh, and, and his role. I want to know what the role is, what the scope is. And we've got the per hour charts and that, you know, I understand that, but how long is this gonna take? What's, what, what do we need to do there? I, I just don't want to go into a contract without having some sort of idea of the cost of that contract.
And I, I think that that's something that um, I know a couple of commissioners on here have mentioned that we can try to get that contract done on the, the twenty-seventh, uh, where it gives us enough time to get all that information, um, Scott, that you just requested. And I, I agree. I think we can um, get the scope down and, and get a little bit more detailed. We've got plenty of time. Um, so I think that part I, I would definitely agree. We do still have though, uh, the other portion about this uh, this texting program. Let me go back and can, the chat program. Had to go back and look. Um, Robin, I know you mentioned that maybe we could look at separating those two out and have one, uh, make, maybe having a contract for the chat portion of it and making a contract later on for the strategic planning portion of it. But now the question is uh, the compensation of it. How much is the chat program? And then how much would be the uh, planning program? That would be my question.
And that also brings up another question for me. Uh, I think it said in there, there's something like, let's say seven point nine cents. I didn't understand. Seven point five cents per resident. So is this an ongoing cost or is there just something, have we? What is the cost right now? What is the ongoing cost to the county?
John?
Sure. I'm, I'm happy to um, and uh, my signal's breaking in a, in and out a little bit, but I think I heard part of Commissioner Sanchez and I think part of uh, Commissioner Ramsey. Um, the uh, what you see in your um, uh, your document is there is a, a cost that's a base cost for our software programmers to pull all that together. And then there is um, text messaging costs. Because um, while you may on your personal phones be on an unlimited program um, uh, with your texting, texting actually does cost. And so your carrier is making an assumption that. By you paying, say ninety nine dollars a month, you're not gonna text enough. Um, that it exceeds that. Um, texting can cost anywhere from point zero two cents. To seven or, well, on some carriers, it's seven cents. Um, uh, those pay as you go carriers tend to be very, very expensive. What I tried to do in there was break it, break it down in terms of the whole. The, the whole kit and caboodle and what that kind of averages out to. But to build the system, to, to actually build the system. Was about eighty two hundred dollars to actually build it. To program it, to code it, to secure it, to do all of those things. And now it's just communicating with people. And as long as we communicate, it, every time we send them a text message out and they respond it. They respond like these um, uh, like these updates that we're getting. Um, every time we do something like that, it's about three cents per, three or four cents per. Depending on the carrier. So, for example, if we had ten thousand people who were in the system. Um, three or four hundred dollars for that exchange. That, how are you feeling? And the, I'm feeling fine, three or four hundred dollars for that exchange. Um, and when, when you, when you put it in pennies, I, I don't know if it sounds like a lot to you or not. And texting is not at the scale we acquire it. It, um, it's not an expensive cost, but if there were two hundred thousand people. Who are, were participating in this, which is unlikely. Um, our estimates, just based on doing surveys, you won't get that level of participation. But if it were two or three hundred thousand people um, doing that, well then. Um, that number, every time there's a communication, um, is pretty, is pretty large. And so um, I, maybe that gives you a sense of Monday, Wednesday and Friday. This is what that expense would be, but the base cost, um, and I don't have it in front of me. Um, was about eighty two hundred dollars, something around that.
So based off what you just said with ten thousand people, you're looking at anywhere from nine hundred to twelve hundred dollars per week. Is that correct? And you're gonna, and so times four. In the, you know, up to, you know, forty eight hundred dollars a month for ten thousand people. Does that sound?
Right, and so I use the seven and a half cents times two hundred thousand. To kinda give y'all a sense of what we thought this effort would be over the course of it. Um, uh, the, over a period of time. And I think we roughly said two months. And two months, we estimated about fifteen thousand dollars um, of. Of the communication and the software. That's where that seven and a half cents or whatever came from. That's how we estimated.
Plus seven and a half cents per uh, text.
No, we were just using the seven and a half percent as kind of, here's what your budget is. Your budget's about fifteen thousand dollars for this duration of this longitudinal study. And so I, I don't think, I don't think it will exceed that. Primarily because I think y'all will have a handle, we're just listening to the CDC and listening to the governor. In sixty days, we're probably gonna know a lot more about where all this has landed. And so we just use that as our estimating point.
John, let me uh, jump in real quick and, and just mention uh, the, the seven point five cents. And the fifteen thousand total that you're saying is for the two months. But the fifteen thousand total is assuming that you have two hundred thousand people sign up. Again, we, not gonna happen, so I.
No, I, I was actually just trying to give y'all a basis for. For this kinda, how we were budgeting this, what we were looking at. And trying to break it down in a way that was manageable, cuz there is a fixed cost. And so if you take the fixed cost with what we estimate. Participation rates will be over a period of time. And you think, how much is this gonna cost us per Midlander? Not that each Midlander will text in, but. How much is it gonna cost us per taxpayer in the county? And that's where that seven and a half cents comes from. Um, and just talking through this, that probably wasn't the best way to represent it from a budgeting perspective. But the fixed cost is the coding, the interaction cost is the balance. Total will be, i- is really a not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars based on two months. Based on the fixed cost and based on what we estimate the interaction to be.
So you're estimating that our personnel services, um. Professional services line item, judge that, that you are allocating fifteen thousand dollars to this project?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
John, the fifteen thousand dollars you're talking about, again, I just wanna uh, be very clear on it. Does that include the eighty two hundred dollar uh. Deal to build the system or is that in addition to?
No, that is all in based on two months of engagement as well. So the fixed cost plus the engagement equals fifteen thousand dollars, which again is how we crudely. Um, said seven and a half times two hundred thousand, but, but that is what we estimate. And the fixed cost we're pretty clear on. We just don't know what the uh, variable cost is, meaning the partition. Participation, but based on people and participation in surveys and all this knowledge that we have. We would be surprised, we would be shocked if it went over fifteen thousand dollars.
Great. Well, I, I think that uh, it makes it a lot easier now that you said an amount not to exceed. Um, so now we know what the amount of money that we're working with. And again, at the end of the day. The, the fact that we're gonna be receiving information, um, you've already gone through. How even the CDC is asking some of these questions on their website, but it's not specific to Midland. The, the last portion, the last question that I have, this is for Russell. To move forward and, and approve this uh, this chat portion. According to the contract that we currently have right now, would you be able just to split this contract up? Russell, on the, on the texting portion, or how would the contract be done? Is, would you have to create a new one? Guide me on, on a little bit on, in regards to the contract.
So I would just uh, uh, just delete the uh, strategic planning portion out of this contract. And uh, and add anything else that was necessary. And then when we come back with the str- strategic planning, I would uh, do a similar contract for that. But just specifically with it and with more detail. So yeah, it's very simple just to delete that out of it. So the motion, if there was a motion, it could be to approve this contract with the exception of anything related to the strategic planning.
Okay. Well, there aren't any other questions. Are there any other questions?
No.
No.
So then, I, I would like to make a motion. Uh, we look at this one part of the chat that was just presented to us. Um, let me go back and look at, I've got all these windows open. I wanna make sure we, I say the uh. I make a motion on approving this contract with mode communications in regards just to the chat portion. Uh, and we delete the strategic planning from the contract and anything related to it. Uh, for an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. And that money would come out of, Judge, what, what line item were you planning on doing this out of?
Veronica, uh, professional services item, is that?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So it'll come out of professional services from the county judge's budget. Uh, Veronica, is that, would, would it be fair to say that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so not fifteen, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars for those two months. Um, coming out of the county judge's professional services budget. Allison, did you get that? I hope it, it wasn't too confusing.
I have a question, Luis, or, or John. Did I misunderstand? I thought the fifteen thousand dollars was for the chat and the planning session. Is that not a correct statement?
No, it's not. My understanding was that the fifteen thousand dollars was for the building of the system and everything else. For, just for the chat, that's just the chat. The strategic planning uh, part, my understanding, that's another item. And I think that was five thousand dollars. I, I don't know where I read that.
No, that's, that's not correct. Um, facilitators locally are about fifteen hundred dollars. Um, whether it's from the nonprofit management center or whatever, that's kind of. Kind of what the going rate is, and so we wouldn't exceed that either. Um, while we operate in the private sector and for most of my clients, strategic planning meetings are. Much more expensive than that, I, I will say, um. Uh, what my commitment to the judge was, I, I'd certainly stay where the market was, which is fifteen hundred dollars.
But the fifteen thousand dollars that we're talking about right now is just specific to the chat, right?
That's exactly right.
Randy, did you, did you get that?
Uh, yes, and uh, I, I have. I, I agree with the idea about getting scopes and so forth, but, but subject to that language, I, I wouldn't mind. Uh, contracting with John to, to lead our retreat. Um, so I, I, I don't know if we can do it on the twenty seventh and still have a retreat on the thirtieth. Um, I, I like having the retreat sooner rather than later. I like the date of the thirtieth myself because. I believe some really important things are happening just in these next two weeks that we really need to respond to as a county. And I would love to have a setup to go by then and not delay it any further. That's just my personal opinion.
Randy, so do you want the motion to include both the strategic planning and the, the chat?
Well, even, even if your motion does not include that, I would love for us to consider both of them, whether it's separately or not. But I think we need to go ahead and get uh, something on the agenda. But John, you can tell me. Uh, if we wait until the twenty seventh to approve some, something about a training agenda. Uh, is that a problem with you to prepare it in advance or tell me what you're thinking?
Well, I would like to say this, I don't wanna ask John to invest any more of his time unless he's got an agreement. To start planning and preparing for a strategic planning meeting. Uh, if we wait till the twenty seventh to do something on the thirtieth, that's an awful short string. For him to be able to provide to us a service, I think he really can. Uh, and I'd like to allow him the opportunity to get started ASAP.
And Terry, that's why I'm bringing it up. I'd like to approve both of these today. Uh, in fact, the planning session is far more important to me than the chat app is, uh, and, and I would love for us to get you. I, I think, I think we need to proceed ahead, which is why I'm bringing it up.
Randy, what I'll do then, let's uh, let's proceed ahead with the chat. And then after this, if you want, we can make a separate motion for the strategic planning. Would that work for you?
Sure.
Okay.
Russell, is that all that good to go that way?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. Allison, did you get my um?
She's got it.
Okay, can we, do you wanna repeat it? I don't know if, uh, just to kinda remind us of what? What you've got?
Yeah, she'll, she's not on, so she'll come over here by my microphone real quick.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the contract in reference to the chat app, um, except the contract. Um, minus the strategic plan, planning process. Um, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars to come from the county judge's professional services.
So that's my motion.
We have motion, is there a second?
I'll reluctantly second that motion.
Okay, all in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
Hey, John, I'd like to make one statement real quick.
Yes, sir.
My vote was not because I didn't wanna get you paid, that's not the case. Obvi- obviously, provided a service, you need to get paid. Because this is the way I would have voted had I had the opportunity to hear the presentation before it was done.
Sure.
Randy, you wanna make the motion for the uh, facilitator?
Yes, and, and I, and um, I agree with uh, uh, Scott's sentiments just now. Uh, but I, but because of my very high degree of confidence in John to help us as a county. Uh, I will make the motion that we engage him uh, to do the planning session and I'm, I'm hoping the thirtieth is the date. Uh, not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars. John, I appreciate that price. That's very, very generous of you to do that. And I'm really looking forward to your, to your wisdom, your ideas, your thoughts. And I, I'm really looking forward to my fellow elected officials to, to share and dream. Uh, about, we're in, the, the, the oil price collapse is ten times worse than the coronavirus in my opinion, and we have got. So I make the motion that we approve the contract with mode uh, to, for fifteen hundred dollars to do a planning session on the thirtieth.
Second.
All in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Hang on, I'm sorry, just saying. Who seconded?
Robin.
Robin seconded, okay, sorry. Unanimous. Okay, we're done with that one. Item twenty two, take action acknowledging person, Brandon.
It's a, I wanna thank you for being on, uh, on with us today. Sorry about that.
That's all right. I'll, I'll sign off, but I'll still watch y'all.
Thanks, Darren.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm unmuted now. Sorry about that. Uh, have, you have the backup to the payroll change summary in your packet? I need to call your attention, uh, quite a few changes that were made in the juvenile probation department. You won't see them on this change summary, but they were made and approved at a juvenile board meeting. Um, there was a counselor position in the juvenile probation department. That uh, uh, was actually a grade twenty four. That's been lowered to a grade twenty entitled a behavior health coordinator. And a person was hired in there at a grade twenty step five. Then there was a juvenile probation officer assistant at a grade fifteen. That position was deleted. And a um. The, it was uh, there's a new one titled a program specialty officer. At a grade seventeen. And so those changes were made in the juvenile uh, department personnel. Uh, I believe what that does, there's two, there's two uh, community action folks. In the probation office that are completely grant, grant funded, I, I believe. And uh, those are grades sixteens. So needed to let you know that. The behavioral health coordinator was hired. The name is Vicky Mastis. At a step five. And that's the only thing out of the ordinary on your payroll change summary today.
Uh, Terry, were you present at that meeting when they made those changes?
No, no, sir, one, was not.
This is quite unusual, um, and um. I don't know what to think about it. Were these budgeted amounts, Mitzi, or, or what?
Well, you know, we gave them a, a, a finite dollar amount for this budget for salaries. Once they were all figured and raises given, we gave them a dollar amount to pay salaries with. And um, and that's all, that's all they have, that's what they have. So there's no changes to the county. They still have the same amount of dollars. They're just reorganized, it looks like.
Okay.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item twenty three, discuss take action on line item transfers.
And I have sent the line item transfers to you. We do have some to bring to your attention. As exceptions, on page six of eleven, line item transfer forty five seventy one. It is moving money out of facility into the horseshoe budget for a drag TV invoice for five hundred dollars. Line item transfer on page eight of eleven, number forty six twenty six. It is moving money out of the shared commissioner's budget into Commissioner Precinct Two's budget for equipment and furnishings. It's funds to for a computer scanner printer Adobe for the new road engineer. So that way that can be purchased. On page nine of eleven, line item transfer forty six sixty five. It is moving money from facilities to cemetery, one thousand seven hundred dollars, funds to cover repairs to one of their cemetery units. Those are the exceptions that I have unless you have any other questions on this.
Motion to approve line item transfers.
Second. And all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Veronica, that was for a for Public Works Director.
Okay, item four, discuss take action on bills and wire transfers.
I have two wire transfers for your consideration this morning. One is moving money into the S O Civil Action Account for twenty dollars deposited in general pool cash account and error. And the other is moving money into the District Clerk's Registry Account, deposited in general pool cash account and error, a hundred and fifty dollars. We're just needing to transfer those funds back from our pooled cash account. As far as the bills are concerned, I do have some exceptions for you. I did have Vivian Juarez from my office send you the exceptions listing so that you could have that. I have the accent food services, road and bridge. I believe they purchased some water, no P O. Westlake Cemetery. When then purchased a pressure washer that was purchased for three hundred and nineteen ninety nine. I've included in my exceptions, the right of way exceptions that the judge wanted for me to bring to your attention. Rendell Sykes, six thousand seven seventy five, San Sean, three thousand dollars for out of the right of way fund. And I do have some additional bills for your consideration this morning. One specifically is the pilot logistics bill for ninety dollars thirty two cents. We currently do not have anyone in the Constable Precinct One office. But I am requesting that the court go ahead and approve for me to pay that bill out of Constable Precinct One. I do have the prosperity credit card that came in and we want to go ahead and get that paid because it's due before the next commissioner's court meeting. And that's four thousand ninety seven dollars and thirty eight cents for the I T department. That's seven hundred and ninety eight dollars and four cents purchases for the child welfare that we use the credit card to purchase items for the kids. And then I do have Mode Communications has presented me a bill for fifteen hundred dollars. And I didn't want to get that paid until we had that contract in place. But if you would please allow me to make these payments along with the payments for the two bonds that our H R director presented to you previously. And that is all I have unless you have any questions.
I make the motion, we pay the bills and and the bills for the bonds.
And the wire transfers.
And the wire transfers.
Okay.
Second, this is Luis.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item twenty five, take action on submitted applications for permits to use county right away for utility and line installations, driveway construction, mailbox construction.
Precinct One is supposed to have two. I only saw one in my backup, but it's basically from the city of Midland over on Batesfield. They said they're gonna get everything taken care of this morning. So out of a abundance of caution, I'm gonna say we I've got two.
Precinct Two has there, I have one that's in my backup and I have I think there are a couple of Pioneer Pipeline easements, borings that that I'd like to have approved this morning as well.
So so three.
Three.
Okay.
There's Commissioner Sanchez, Precinct Three. I've got thirty two.
Precinct Four, I'm not aware of any. I'll make a motion to pass all of those.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Scott.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. We're out of here. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Thank y'all.
Thirty eight A M. Did we get close?